Will be. This wage increase will be a permanent wage increase moving forward?
Yeah.
Okay, because I know there are non-structural and structural increases, but okay, thank you.
Trustee Swanson?
My only comment was that I appreciate how quickly when COVID was going on, we moved and the unions moved to create a situation where this could happen right now, and I appreciate the work that's been done on everyone's behalf. I know that constantly in communications amongst the board, we express our appreciation for the hard work of the staff. And so I'm just grateful that this was able to be resolved quickly, as I'm sure all of us are.
Thank you, Demi. Trustee Wilson, would you just state your name and present and Ipsy Township? Jimmy?
I think he's having some audio trouble.
I think he's on mute.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you. Welcome.
Okay, I can't hear you, but I see your mouth moving. But Jimmy Wilson here, Ipsy Slaney Township.
Okay, very good. So we have a motion and support to approve the letter of agreement for wage reopeners for Township Ask Me 14B and Teamsters Bargaining Unit. All in favor? Um, Jimmy? You can't, can you hear us? Okay. I'm so sorry. Well. I don't, all right, we lost him now. Okay, so all in favor? I?
I.
I.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number two is request to approve the camera attachment agreement for distribution poles, conduits, and trenches with DTE.
So moved, Gerald Row.
Support. The motion, Gerald Row, support Swanson to approve the agreement. Mr. Winters?
Yes, this actually went back to October of last year, 2020, when DTE sent us a very lengthy contract requesting the township to approve that, given that the township had attached forty seven separate pole locations and security cameras, et cetera. We did not sign the contract at that time. The new board was coming into office in November, and we did have meetings, one by zone, in which we explained to DTE that we did not just attach these cameras without taking into consideration that they were DTE's poles. In fact, the contractor, if the township had been utilizing, Conti, actually had in their agreement that they were authorized as a DTE contractor to go ahead and proceed accordingly, and that DTE was aware of this. During that meeting, it became obvious to the township, full-time officials, myself, Javon, and Neil, and I believe Director Ranzick, that they had no clue as to who, what we were talking about. And any of that, we still had to deal with the fact that we had forty seven attachments on their poles. And as such, the conversation turned as to where do we go from here? And because in the contract, our attachments were deemed to be unauthorized, that carried with that the potential for a pretty steep financial penalty. So during that meeting, it was agreed that I would prepare a red line version of what I wanted to see in the contract with the main issue being that the forty seven attachments be grandfathered in, and that we would follow their process going forward. It sounds simple enough, but it took a number of revisions back and forth, and also the conversations between Supervisor Stumbo and some of the other people at DTE to have the language put into the contract that truly does treat the forty seven attachments as being authorized. And so they have a list of all the cameras and camera locations. And so going forward, there is a very defined process that this board and future boards are going to follow and will follow if we want to use DTE's poles for a security camera or other type of an attachment. And so this contract is in proper form. It also contains the language that you've become somewhat familiar with, that by signing this, we're now waiving our rights to governmental immunity. And likewise, I did note in my memorandum that this is a five-year contract, and it is automatically renewed on an annual basis thereafter unless the township or DTE provides a six-month notification. So again, this contract is approved, it should be diaried in a way so that it comes up in a regular basis. DTE charges about $5 a month per attachment, and they have a 5% escalation fee that goes into effect on January 1st of each year. So even though we're signing the contract, say now in January of 2022, there will be a 5% increase in that $4.99 or $5 for all practical purposes. But at this point in time, I do believe that it brings to finality this issue of unauthorized attachments, and also provides the forms that need to be filled out properly by the township. Or in going forward, if we are going to have security cameras attached to DTE's poles. I did have a brief conversation with Clerk Row, and while we normally would request the other party to sign first, I think, given the fact that in this case, we are the ones that are seeking, I guess, the benefit of not having to pay for any unauthorized attachments, I have no problems that the board sees fit for this to be authorized and be signed for by Supervisor Stumbo and Clerk Row, and then have that forwarded on to a DTE's joint facilitator, Daniel Crabtree, just so we can show that, I want to make sure that we accept the fact that this is now, from our standpoint, a done deal as it pertains to the forty seven attachments that currently exist on DTE's poles. But again, this has taken probably more time than what we wanted to spend on, but at the same time, there was, it was too much money for us to pay out of pocket for unauthorized attachment fees, and we felt the DTE was aware of it based upon the contractor's representations to us. But going forward, it doesn't matter. We now have a process that will follow and make sure that they get full notice and approval, and everybody should be happy again.
Okay.
At least for a while.
Any questions or comments on this? I do know that Mike Ranzick also worked hard in trying to get all the information together, and Javon and Neil. So moving forward, we know exactly what it is. DTE usually is regulated, well, is regulated by Public Service, but this is a third party, or there's a different term that they use. So it's really not regulated by Public Service Commission, and I appreciate the cost of $5. It will escalate, and you know, of course, it's going to get a lot higher as the years to come, but that's a, that's very affordable, and we apologize because we really, truly thought and was told by the installers, Conti, that they had permission to do so, or we would never just, I shouldn't say that, but normally, we would never put something up on a pole without thinking we had the authorization to do that. So I know the previous clerk was dealing with this, and it's really, Doug, thank you for not getting, you know, like a fine for each one that we could have received, and this is a fair agreement moving forward, and we know what it is, so we can budget for it, and we can plan on this process as we move forward. So I appreciate everyone's work on it. We have a motion and support?
Add a question?
Yes, John?
First, are there, how many of these are there? Will there, cameras, will there be like?
Forty-seven.
Forty-seven? Okay, and are these linked to the police station, or how does that work?
Police station have access to them, yes.
Okay.
They only look at them to investigate, because it's not a, anything they monitor, and it's not pointed in any private property, it's in the room right away.
Okay, so yeah, like, I know, say, like Detroit has, like, real time, so if something happens, but this will be different.
I'm not sure what Detroit has, but I know that they record, and you can go on and look back. I think it's for thirty days they keep it to investigate, and it.
Okay.
That's all I know. I'm sorry, I don't know what Detroit does. I apologize.
Oh, yeah, I. Thank you.
Uh huh. Any other questions?
I just wanted to make a comment that in lines, in line with what you said, Supervisor Stumbo, I really appreciate the time and the effort that's been put into this, but also the problem solving and the institutional memory. I think sometimes that's something that doesn't get looked at favorably, but there's institutional memory at the township and the records and the documents that have been in place so that when a problem arises like that, we can go back and we can look at things, and it worked out in the best interest of the residents and the township as a whole. So thank you for that work.
Trustee Swanson, any other questions or comments? All in favor?
I.
I.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number three is request to approve a contract with Washtenaw County Sheriff's Office to facilitate collaborative sharing of a school resource officer for the summer months for Lincoln Consolidated Schools in the amount of $33,123, which is budgeted in line item 266-301-000831008.
So moved, Gerald Row.
Peterson, we have a motion, Gerald Row, support Peterson. We do, we do this every year. We used to do it with Willarun Schools and Ipsy Slaney Community Schools, and then they merged, and Lincoln School, I believe, is the only school that contracts for a deputy. So when the school is shut down, we contract for Ipsy Township, which puts more people in our community when we need them, and they have a relationship with the youth, too. So it's really been a win-win situation. We've done it for many, many, many years. So we're bringing this forward just to continue to add deputies in the summer when we need them. John?
Does this one deputy or many deputies for the summer?
It's only one.
One? What's the term of the summer, like July?
In the contract? I think it's June fourteenth to August 27th, June fourteenth. It's in the board packet that was.
Okay.
I hope you received it. Yeah, so it explains that is the time period there and the amount. So they prorate it, and that's how we come up with the amount to contract with Lincoln Schools for it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Supervisor Stumbo, I had one question. I wondered how vacation time works, so if the officer, because you know, I'm guessing that they want the officer working when school's in session. So I'm wondering how, because I didn't see that in the contract, how the vacation time has worked out. So if the officer were to take vacation time, and it was happening in the summer, are we taking the full, I mean, we would have the full responsibility for that benefit without the benefit of the officer being working with us? So is there anything that's prorated or some kind of a sharing of vacation time so that both entities are sharing in that, or is it just vacation time happens when schools are, that's what I?
And I know this question has come up before, and Mike Ranzick is actually on vacation, so I'm reading the contract, because Stan, you had brought this up before.
Correct.
So do you see it? I'm not sure.
I would assume that since our, our cost is, pays for their wages and benefits, vacation time being benefit, that it's just included.
It says that the township being financially responsible for that deputy for the time that he or she works for the township. So I don't know if that clarifies. We can find out. Because we asked the same questions in the, in the past, I know. Mr. Winters, are you?
The way I believe it works is kind of maybe a hybrid of what Trustee Wilson said, others have said. The PSU is what is being, is in the $160,000, and so, but for the township agreeing to have this deputy reassigned during this time period, the entire PSU amount of 160 plus would be paid by Lincoln Schools. So in regards to his benefits or his, her benefits or vacation time, et cetera, that's all part of that 160. I guess the question we have is that, as Trustee Swanson said, we don't know if this specific deputy has already utilized the vacation. It'd be my, it'd be my opinion that if you pick up these three months, you more or less stand in the shoes of the Lincoln School District, and whatever vacation time he or she may have already signed up for would be handled through that separate contract between the county and Lincoln School. So in any event, I don't know exactly how it would be any different than if they were PSU under ours, because I think we stand in the shoes of Lincoln for that period of June 14th through August 27th, and whether it's for PTO time, medical, vacation time, or anything else. I think that for that period of time, we have, we have the benefit, we also have the liability or the responsibility.
I'm not exactly sure. So we can find out, but the only part I questioned, Doug, is where it says being the township is financially responsible for that deputy for the time that he or she works for the township. So I know this has come up in the past about, so maybe the weeks they're off, they don't charge us for it, but I can get clarification.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Heather?
I just wanted to, I don't know if this, like, makes it more clear or more muddy, but under Article Three, it does say that the rates are subject to change based on the availability of staffing level, levels and the implementation of this contract. So, you know, just like the same way when, you know, our deputy palateer takes some time off, if they're able to, like, have someone cover his space, then that's great. But if not, then I don't believe we would be subject to the charge, but we can get clarification from Deputy Gordon tomorrow.
Yeah, or we can table it.
No, I'm fine moving forward. I just want to, I, and I, people have a right to their benefits, so I don't want to say that that's not what my question's about. My question is really just about understanding on the full benefit we receive for those months. So I don't want to indicate, or I don't want anybody to think that I don't think someone has a right to the benefits that they have. I just want to understand how that takes place in a contract where we share them.
And it's a good question, Demi. Stan has raised it several times in the past as well, so we can get clarification on it. From Mike, but Mike wasn't here because he's on vacation, so, and so is Shane, the lieutenant, so we will get clarification. So we have a motion support? All in favor?
I.
I.
Opposed? Motion carries. I would like to request, since all board members are present, if we can add to the agenda authorization for waste management for a special pickup for flood-damaged single-family homes at a rate of $200 an hour, not to exceed $10,000.
So moved, Wilson?
Support, Swanson?
We have a motion by Wilson, support by Swanson. Any questions or comments on this? All in favor?
I.
I.
Opposed? Motion carries. That concludes the agenda item. I did notice there was an article in the paper about some of our lawsuit, a pending lawsuit. And then, Mr. Winters, I don't know if you want to comment on that, or I don't think we can. It's a special meeting, but it's not an action.
I can comment on anything the board wants me to comment on in regards to, I mean, I would not be asking for any authorization, since that's not what I would be updating. I would be updating the board on a number of different issues ranging from the crematorium and the marijuana, if the board is still inclined to receive any updates.
Are there any objections? Can I have an update?
No, I would like it.
Well, no, I'm sorry.
Saying me, too.
This has been a very frustrating month, to say the least. I think that I've read enough of all of your emails to know that the way that Township Attorney McLean and myself feel, that all of you have the same heartfelt concerns in regards to what transpired at 1106 East Michigan. And I will say at the outset that I have no doubt whatsoever, but no doubt in my mind that but for the Township Board authorizing the emergency measures that were undertaken by Township Attorney McLean and others itself, that we would not be sitting here today knowing, at least knowing, that all fifty-five bodies have been removed from the crematorium. They were taken to other licensed facilities for final cremation, to the best of our knowledge, in accordance with the requirements of state law. That does not mean that that issue is over with far as the township is concerned. I think it's just beginning in many ways. There are far more questions today than there are answers, and I'm still perturbed by the state's initial plan. This was their, and then their initial plan differed greatly from what the township's vision and plan was for what needed to occur there. Their plan was to take five to six weeks at a minimum to have cremation occurred at this facility on a, with an incinerator, and not even been inspected, and to do so in the most sordid conditions that one can imagine, given the fact there was no air conditioning, no cold storage, and given the unprecedented, in my belief, of the heat, humidity, and rain that we've experienced here the last few weeks. So again, while I'm glad to report that all those bodies have been removed, I don't think the township has all the answers that we have to have as to how this happened to begin with. I've said in other letters related to this, but obviously, I think we're entitled to know as to what went wrong. I really believe that. How could this occur? What steps are in place to make sure it never happens again, given the track record of some of the people involved in this crematorium that have also been involved in other similar affairs and other parts of the state, including Flint, possibly Detroit? And so, you know, I had to say there right now that we're satisfied or that we're happy, that's not, that's not, it wouldn't be true. We have a lot of unanswered questions that I believe all of you have in regards to how this happened. And I'm just, I know that we have another hearing coming up. I think in the letter, it said July 21st. It's actually been moved up to July 13th, in which the defendants are supposed to present some type of a plan as to how they think this building should be decontaminated. And, and we have, through Dave Bellers and other people on the township's team, reached out to Bill for, to have a better understanding as to what they believe should be done at a minimum. This property is currently under a demolition order, and we have recorded with the Register of Deeds the notice that places any prospective purchasers on notice of pending violations. So anybody who wants to purchase this property will do so by standing in the shoes of the defendants in terms of any court orders. That is why we recorded that affidavit. But right now, we're proceeding now with this building in its current dilapidated, unsanitary, you can almost pick your choice of adjectives to describe the horrific conditions that are still in existence at this place. Nobody's allowed to operate or do anything beyond start doing maintenance and cleanup if they can be done safely, and that's why we have a review hearing scheduled for July 13th. But again, the initial focus was to ensure that the fifty-five bodies were removed and were taken to a place where they could have the cremation occur in a dignified setting as opposed to what we discovered. At the same time, I think the state, again, has some explaining to do, not only to the, especially, especially to the families, the families as to what, how this could happen here, given the length of time that some of the deceased were in that building. This shouldn't happen in 2021. It shouldn't happen at all. This is just, it's unspeakable to think that we're having this conversation about what went on over there, and the fact that they've been properly transferred to those licensed facilities, that's a good thing, but it doesn't answer the questions that we have, including what they're, including why they were proposed to, to do, how, why, why they even thought that was a viable option to proceed in the manner they proposed that would still be under, still be ongoing, but for the lawsuit that was filed as authorized by the Township Board. So that's probably somewhat of an up-to-date in regards to what's, what has occurred, what remains to be done, or remains to be done in the courtroom with the, with the review hearing scheduled for July 13th before Circuit Court Judge Archie Brown. So if there's any questions, I'll try and answer those, but that's the first update that I wanted to share with the board.
I, I, I'm hopeful that, with due diligence, that this doesn't happen to another community again. So if the, if the state, I agree with the comments that you've made, Attorney Winters, but if the state had handled previous incidents involving similar behavior in a way that our community might not have had this happen here. So it did, and the hope is that going forward, something happens so that this doesn't happen to another community ever again.
The the second update that I want to take a moment to share with you is because most of the board members, I know, especially the new board members, were not, we have, we've had no way of knowing the background behind the medical marijuana lawsuit. I did send out over the weekend copies of those letters going back to 2019 and 2020, as well as letters pertaining to what is occurring right now as we speak, so that there would be at least some effort to provide a background of the case involving the township and Judith Pontius. Back in 2010, Ipsy Township became one of the very first communities to enact a, a medical marijuana zoning ordinance that would allow medical marijuana caregivers to locate in the I-1 Light Industrial District. At the time the law went into effect, medical marijuana was legal and could be grown by a person that had a medical marijuana card, so long as they, they were limited to twelve plants. Anyone who was going to be a caregiver that allowed a caregiver to have up to, up to five additional patients and twelve more plants per patient, they could not grow those marijuana plants in a residential zoning district. And as the township continued to argue during the last five years, it was our belief then- And as the township continued to argue during the last five years, it was our belief then, it was our belief during the court hearings. And ultimately was the decision of the Michigan Supreme Court. That the Medical Marijuana Act does not preempt the Michigan Zoning and Enabling Act. Under the Michigan Zoning and Enabling Act, that gives the Township Board or the Township Planning Commission and the Township Board. The right to determine where certain activities, commercial activities, industrial activities, et cetera. Which zoning district they should be located in. The Township Board determined that if you're going to grow as a caregiver, that should be in I one district. And as we, um, went through the process, we pointed out over and over again, the impact that having a. A lot of our subdivisions are very, very, very dense in terms of the lot size. Uh, I grew up on a fifty foot lot over there off of Holmes Road. They're very, very close together. In fact, I can remember during the summertime, sitting outside long before there were cell phones. Everybody had their front door open. If someone's telephone would ring, half of us would go into the house because we knew you were so close. You couldn't tell which, which house the telephone was ringing from. That's how close the houses were. And that's a true story because I remember very well sitting out there saying, that's my, I don't think it's a phone. It was anyways, the houses are very close together. We all know that. And so what, uh, and so you can have a, a negative impact upon your adjacent property owner, uh, very easily. And so what was going on in this particular case at Lester Street is we had a, a person who was a licensed caregiver. Growing seventy two plants of marijuana and continued to grow seventy two plants. All during the time this case was in litigation. And there were constant reports, all the constant reports of neighbors complaining about the stench of marijuana. But at that point in time, there wasn't a whole lot the township could do. Because unlike what you may have seen on TV by Ms. Pontius and her attorney. The township does follow the rulings of the court. We had to follow a process. And so when the court initially ruled in her favor, okay, that's why we have a court of appeals. And when the court of appeals appealed the lower court, that's why we have a Michigan Supreme Court. And we went for the Michigan Supreme Court along with other townships and they had similar issues. In that case, it was decided back, I believe in twenty twenty, there was a unanimous decision. It wasn't a close call at all. It was unanimous decision by all seven judges that, um. That the townships to the Michigan zoning and, and the Michigan zoning and enabling act is not preempted by the medical marijuana act. If the township and cities and villages had a right to determine where the medical marijuana caregivers could be located. And as such, the Michigan Supreme Court, in light of that, sent it back to the court of appeals. Telling them to basically revisit the township case in light of their ruling. In this Deruder v. Byron Township case, the court of appeals reversed themselves based upon that decision. And sent it back to Judge Conkey, who in turn entered an order that said back in June of this year. That you now have to, that the property being utilized for growing marijuana plants in excess of twelve constitutes a nuisance. There is a deadline to have those plants removed, which has come and gone. And the, the person was supposed to contact the Washington County Shares Department to confirm that those plants had been removed. The township in no time, contrary to what people sometimes like, like to believe, the township in no time has ever prevented. Him up and growing twelve marijuana plants in their, in their residential property. If they have a medical, they properly have the credentials to do so. But you can't grow, uh, as a caregiver, you can't grow more than twelve. And so we've had neighbors that have continued to complain about, um, the, the noxious odors. And, uh, as was reported today, at least in the M live article. Michigan summers don't last very long, they really don't. I mean, you, you may think they do when it gets, you get to a heat wave, but basically we have from June until Labor Day. It's about all we get. And so when people want to have outdoor gatherings, especially after COVID. In which, in which they want to enjoy, uh, families, their grandchildren, their children, barbecues, whatever. They should not have to basically, uh, be negatively impacted by the noxious odor coming from a house growing seventy two marijuana plants. In violation of the township zoning ordinance, it's not singling out anybody who wishes to grow twelve, but you can't grow seventy two. There's a reason why we have a zoning ordinance and, and there's a reason why you don't have a gas station located in a residential district. Don't have party stores located in a residential district. Uh, many, many other commercial activities located in a, in a residential district. Because you have zoning that says where those activities are properly should be located. People may argue with you that it should be this zoning versus another zoning. And that's fair to argue that, but the final decision is, and recommendation comes from the planning commission to the township board. And that's what the township board currently has. Back on, on July sixth, this coming July sixth is, I mean, more conversation about this issue that involves both medical marijuana and recreational marijuana. But right here, right now, the fact remains that this, if we're going to be in a system where court orders are obeyed by the township. And they have been. Then a court orders have to also be obeyed by the other parties. And they can't have attorneys saying, well, this creates a financial hardship. There's a lot of financial hardships that purportedly may be created. I don't believe that's the case. I believe this is basically what I said, it's about the, it's about the money involved here. But right now, the greatest investment is made by people in our township, and I believe the other parts as well, this state is, is in their home. That's what really is their greatest investment. And that's why when you have. A number of different cases come to you in the years gone by and present and future. They all have one theme and that's one theme usually behind them, neighborhood stabilization. Yes, what we're trying to achieve here is neighbor stabilization. And to make sure that we have people that want to live in Ibsley Township. And that their property values and their, and their rights as a property owner are also taken into account when determining. What activities are going to be allowed in a residential zoning district. So at this point in time. We're not negotiating with the defendant to extend the time period. She's known ever since the Michigan Supreme Court case came down, that this day was coming. They've all known that, their attorneys have known that. And they continue to want to, uh, grow plants, harvest plants and try to, uh, even the attorney has told me in email that this media. Uh, was basically designed to create sympathy. Well, okay, that's your goal, that's your goal, then fine. But there's a court of law that says right now, you have to remove those plants. Our zoning ordinance does matter. And we spend a lot of time and a lot of money protecting our residential neighborhoods. And if someone, if any attorney or for them, anybody else has a problem with that, then that's fine. Because our role is to do what the township board has properly vetted as to where, um. This type of activity should be allowed. If, if this board or future boards ever determine differently, that's up to them. But right here, right now, that's not what the zoning ordinance requires and they cannot do what they're doing there. And I'm not agreeable to extend the timeline to September to October. So a person can continue to harvest seventy two marijuana plants because they feel they have a financial investment. When they've known ever since the Supreme Court decision in April twenty twenty, that what they were doing was not allowed. They've known that. And so I am a little bit, uh, taken aback, especially when attorneys reach out to board members. To try and have a conversation like they did with supervisor, he has an attorney. I can't speak with another attorney's client, nor would I ever attempt to do so. You can't do that. There's been a number of things that have gone on here that have been totally inappropriate. And we have filed a motion, uh, we have a motion probably filed tomorrow, which we're asking the court to allow us to go in there. And make sure that the plants that exceed the amount that's allowed are removed. Because again, other people's rights are impacted as well. And I've always said this to the Office of Community Standards, to our ordinance officers and to all the people that, that have to deal with these type of issues. Is it's a very simple test, very simple test. And that is to ask yourself, how would you feel living next to this property and this going on? That is why we draw a line in the sand in many ways and say right now, this behavior is unacceptable. Because as board members, you are in a position where you're representing all the people of this township. And if someone has an issue that's legitimately impacting their quality of life, then we have a responsibility. And the legal authority to at least bring it to the court's attention. You don't just take matters into your own hand, you follow the process. Township followed the process for five years, for five years. That's all that is going on because we did not want to concede or lose the right to determine where certain activities should be located. Through, in this township, through a zoning ordinance. And the Michigan Supreme Court was not a hard, was not a hard, uh, was like you say, wasn't close, it was unanimous. Not too many, not too many cases, uh, these days are decided unanimously by the Michigan Supreme Court. Even one of the questions was asked of, uh, by, uh, I think it was Justice, uh. The Bernstein asked the question, mentioned Ibsley Township in his question that, okay, so you're saying that if you have a five story home. In a residential home and you have a number of caregivers, all who live in that house. Then each one has five patients can grow seventy two plants in a residential district and that would be illegal? Is that what you're saying? And basically the attorney said yes. So you can imagine that if this whole thing had not gone the way the township was hoping it would be, what we prepared for. It could be a different outcome that could have a lot of impacts upon our neighborhood. Because if each caregiver can have five patients and you can have multiple caregivers in one residential house. Then each one can grow seventy two plants. You could have a situation where a husband and wife could each be a caregiver, each have five patients. And therefore they could grow a hundred and forty four plants.
Yeah.
Then is what was, that was the possibility and it's not just a possibility, it's actually has occurred. And so there was a lot at stake here and going this far. And I salute, uh, commend the boards that, uh, authorized this. Angela King from our office, um, spent a lot of time, a lot of time on this case, uh, fighting her way through the appellate courts. And sometimes there was pressure to give up, give up, give up. Well, if you're right, you don't want to give up. And because it'd be, if you give up your rights on zoning on this issue, then what, what rights are taken away the next time someone says, well, you've been preempted. You know, furthermore, this is not like a local ordinance, we were acting under state authority. And we decided that basically we wanted to have the caregivers located in a different zoning district than those who are going twelve. Marijuana plants for personal use. So as you continue to weigh through, uh, some of these newspaper reporting. And even, um, as of today, and as you continue to read the letters and the orders. I got told reporters today, uh, there's been a lot of court decisions over the years that I don't agree with. But it doesn't mean I can just pick and choose the ones I'm going to follow.
Right.
As the attorney to this board, if the ruling is a certain, I mean, if it goes a certain way. And the board is best bound to do this, I don't tell you to violate that court order. I don't tell you that, you know, I disagree with this and therefore you can have this, you know, refusal to comply. If we have a court of laws and a court system that we respect, then it's, it's going to happen. Sometimes you get a decision not quite right. We don't agree with this, but we have to somehow take it and move on and then move around in a different direction. Like we did many years ago, the GM case where the tax abatement, so we believe we're contracted later on. The court said they don't constitute a contract. Then we had the Michigan Legislature change the tax abatement law so that we now can require companies to enter into contracts. That was the solution to the lack of clarity at the time, even though we felt we were right. We didn't just get mad, we went and did something, uh, to change the law and the process that now is a benefit to all the communities in the state. So at this point in time, uh, we, we will have a hearing coming up. Uh, once that hearing has been scheduled, I will provide the board members with the appropriate Zoom link. If you wish to, uh, sit in and watch the court hearing. Well, we're hoping to have the court hearing as early as one day next week in the middle of the week. But at the same time, again, um, uh, we have to follow. If we have to follow the court orders, which we do and should, then so does the other side. And, uh, uh, if the, the decision had gone the other way, I would not be advising the board to go ahead and prosecute people. For doing something that we know has been authorized to do so by a court. That's not what we do. So we've had to deal with that and, and other issues. And I won't get into anything else of like, I don't want to, especially me into, the, the longer than you need to. I thought you should be able to, to take a moment and be updated in regards to that issue.
Thank you. All right. Motion to adjourn?
So moved, Joe Rowe.
Support, Wilson.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting adjourned at five fifty one. Thank you.